Bienvenidos, welcome everybody. I call to order the work session for the Beaverton School Board on September 26, 2023 at 5:30 PM. I just want to note that we have six board members or five board members present here in person. Sunita is online and Ugana is excused. And today's, the topic of today's work session, or sorry, the topic of the work session today is our Board Operating Agreements. I just wanted to say that today's work session is a continuation of the work that we started at a retreat. And as a reminder, those operating agreements that we'll be talking about today started from previous work that the Board had done. The previous Chair Tom Collette and I were asked to revise them. So I gathered over 15 like different operating agreements from Oregon and Washington to kind of compare. And what I noticed that they almost all had in common were that initial table showing our responsibilities and those of the superintendent. And with a very, with a very new board, we went on, we leaned on the side of putting a little bit more detail than not. And during our retreat, we were asked to kind of cut it back a little bit to make it so that it's a kind of a shorter document. And there's many of the board policies kind of drive the statements that are on this document today that you'll, that we'll be talking about. Another piece is that you can look through each of our board policies to get this information, but it's also really hard to do that. So that's why we kind of picked some of these specific pieces to make it more succinct and hopefully helpful to the Board. One last piece is that the Board Operating Agreements are more than just how we conduct ourselves in these meetings because we're publicly elected officials that are out in our communities, in our schools. We work with our district employees or, you know, engage with them and impact the strategic plan and the budgets. But we have one employee, which is our superintendent, and our interactions with each other, the superintendent, and all those that I just named are, you know, kind of outlined in the various sections of this document. So I think that's all I want to say. Superintendent, is there any comments you'd like to make before we get started?
Just appreciate all the board work that's gone into this and look forward to the conversation. So thank you.
And I just want to acknowledge our facilitators today will be Mike Scott and Erica Lopez. And I'll now hand it over to them.
All right, thank you. We're excited to be back and to continue this work with you. And if you would advance the slide, one more please. The last time we were together, as Karen mentioned, we were tasked with putting together a more succinct version of the working agreements and specifically those items that board members are going to encounter over and over again. And so with, in collaboration with the board leadership as well as district staff, we have put together a shorter version that hopefully is simple to refer to and is, makes this super convenient for the board members. If we could advance one. So just a reminder in terms of why we have working agreements and for those people online that may be listening and wondering why would we spend time on such a thing, working agreements do provide a great framework for board members to understand their role and, and to make sure that they're fulfilling their responsibilities. The other thing that it does is it starts to outline how the board and superintendent team work together to accomplish work for kids. And I think that's a key reason why, why many, many districts have working agreements like this. The other thing that it does, it helps us in a proactive way start to head off some potential issues where dysfunction may occur. Clearly, when you have a group of adults that work together, there's the potential for dysfunction unless we're very deliberate about guarding against that. This helps to do that. And it, I think probably the most important bullet point up here that it helps us focus our energy and our time and our resources on improving student achievement to make sure that when our students are finished with their experience in the district that they have opportunity, any opportunity in front of them that they would like to pursue. As I mentioned before, boards throughout the region, throughout the state, throughout the nation, they, they oftentimes have working agreements. And if you look back over the last couple of years where in Oregon, so many of our board members came onto boards during COVID and we, during this last election, we've got folks that have joined the board as well. So it's not uncommon at this time for boards to be pursuing and identifying working agreements just, just because they haven't had the opportunity in the years of experience together to, to understand their roles. We also understand that when it comes to these identifying roles and responsibilities and the working agreements, one of the things that we hope that it's helpful for you is you have people coming at you, you have community members coming at you all the time and sharing their concerns about X, Y, or Z. And it's important to understand what your role is in addressing those concerns and getting them, getting them turned to the correct people. I think the other thing is working agreements allow us to not get stuck into spin on issues but to continue to make forward progress. And that's why we're spending our time here. If we can advance one slide, please. All right, so our goals for this evening is we are going to do some work in some small groups. We're going to have a couple of board members per group and then we're going to have a scribe for you that one of the staff members is going to assist with that. And our goal is to look at the content of the working agreements that's going to be shared with you. And I think you got a copy of those in advance and we'll be looking at those again in small groups. And you'll be assigned a portion of the working agreements, your group will. That doesn't mean you won't have the opportunity to weigh in on the rest of the working agreement, but you're, you're going to be the, the expert for, for the next half hour or so in that area. You'll read that, you'll look for things that may need edited, something that lacks clarity the way it currently is. And if we could encourage you to focus on the content and not so much the wordsmithing that goes with that, we'll, we'll take care of that as we take notes as you share out. Following your time to work together and to take a look at your portion of the working agreements, then you'll come back and you'll share out with the rest of the group and we'll start to capture that information. Our goal is then that we would have an amended draft for you to share at the October 24th Board meeting. That would be our next steps. All right, Erica?
Hi, everyone. So we are going to get you moving a little bit. So we'll, we have divided you in, like Mike said, in a couple of groups. If you want to advance, yeah, the next slide there. So when you get to your group, you'll have a chart paper that we'll hand over to you. And really what we want you to do is divide that into four quadrants with your group. You're gonna, on the first quadrant, you're gonna look at the section that's assigned to you and see if there's any additional clarification that's needed or potential edits. And just note that, like Mike said, you don't want to get into the wordsmithing part or grammar. Just making sure that if there's something that you're confused about, you just make a note about it. The other quadrant is if there's something missing that you were hoping to read in the section or that you were hoping the section included, also make a note of that. The next section is if there's something you don't agree with, whether it's just something that you don't think should belong here in the section or you just don't want, you would want to strike it out, make a note of that in that quadrant. And then lastly, any questions that you have that aren't answered there that you want to have a conversation with the group. So we're going to give you about 20 minutes with your group to do this portion. And then we're going to come back with a larger group and then have a more robust conversation where everybody gets to share about their section. So if you want to advance to the next slide, I'll show you what group and what section. And I think we'll probably leave this slide up so you have this as a reference. So you notice that I, just accidentally you're on two places. And that's because I just realized that Ugana was gone, so I was trying to move you over. So please stay in the communications group, D and E with Melissa. And then the first group is Susan and Tammy and the second group is Sunita and Karen. And in the italicized name at the bottom is your scribe, your staff member that's going to be in your group that's going to help capture your comments. Does anybody have any questions about what we're about to do? Okay, so time starts now. I'm just kidding. I'll hand, I'll walk around and hand a copy, if you don't have a paper copy of the working agreements, so that you can have something to refer to.
All right, everyone, we're gonna start. Please have designated someone to share for your group.
Should we start the other way around, share with the last group and then end with the first group?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so let's start the other way. We'll start with the last group first and work our way backwards. Yeah, we can just stay in your groups and share from your location there.
Oh, no, they can see us here, right?
They can see us. Okay, we're gonna start with Justice and Tammy's team over there. And you, sorry, Melissa, I was looking at the card. Sorry, you guys switched. So, Melissa and Justice, you had Communications, Section D and E, Communication with Staff and Visits to School.
I'm on it.
All right. So, we did, for Category D, Communication with Staff. First question that came up, or clarification, is for DB, and that's Board Members will direct questions and comments to the Superintendent and Executive Leadership where appropriate. Board Members will not directly contact other district employees, even if there is a previous relationship established. The question is, clear expectations as a visitor and engagement with building administration. So, for example, I'm at a basketball game, and the principal comes up and starts chattering at me. Am I like, nope, I'm not to engage? Or, you know, what's the best manner to be able to address that in context there? And one thing they don't necessarily agree with, I think, is more clarity, again on DB, is seeking the context. Again, it's, what was the example?
I think my example was, dang, I cannot remember. It was, you know, in the space of someone either sharing information with me, am I to try not to have that conversation? Or if it's clarity, oh, this was it. Was if the clarity is around, like, if I'm seeking information as a board member from district staff, you know, not through the channel of, like, reaching out to the Superintendent. Like, if that's what we're trying to clarify, I think we should make that more clear. Like, you know, because I think that's the context, is I shouldn't be maybe going, like, I'm gonna randomly start pulling information from different staff for something I wanna know, but not talking to the Superintendent. I think, I think that's what I was thinking.
Right.
If that's what we're trying to say, I don't know if we can be-
So, you're going to a middle school performance, and it's a play, and we happen to be having a large district dialogue around schedules.
Right, and then I start going, so what do you think about schedule? What do you think about schedule? Tell me more. Right, like, that, I think that's the goal, right? Is that the goal of that particular question?
Yeah.
So, I think we should clarify that in some way.
And then, in terms of questions for Category D, Letter E, so Information Requests. So, the question here is, does a Superintendent have discretion to forward to staff or board? It says fifteen minutes in here in terms of more, fifteen minutes of staff time to work on. Does a Superintendent have the discretion to say, great question, but I prefer that that come from the board and not from a single board member? This is the question here.
And we're just having you share out right now, so we're not answering any of your input. I just wanted to clarify that. We're collecting your feedback and having you share out.
And then, we only had one other, and it's in the next section of Visits to Schools on E, Letter B. Board Members are invited to attend public school events such as performances and athletic events and will notify the Superintendent of their attendance. Does this mean all events, or all events, as in games, volunteering, going to a play, everything across the board? Melissa's worried about your inbox on your phone getting filled. And that was it.
Great, great input. Thank you. Okay, let's go to our second group, Communications, Section A, B, and C. Agenda Setting, Spokesperson, Media Communication with Public. And that was Sunita and Karen. All of your quadrants.
Okay, in our group, again, we had Section Five, Board Communications, A, B, and C. And so, in Quadrant One, Clarification and Potential Edits, we are suggesting an edit related to A, C. And, and that's an area that talks about how topics might be addressed. And there are examples such as the Superintendent's Weekly Memo, an item for information or an item in an upcoming board meeting agenda. This group is recommending adding also the possibility of non-quorum information sessions where staff and a non-quorum number of board members can talk and learn about a topic. So, that's one potential edit. The next one is Section C, Communications with the Public. Item E, Item E says, if a communication is sent to all board members, the Chair or Vice Chair will respond on behalf of the board, copying the Superintendent. The suggested edit is eliminate Vice Chair and add instead or designee. And so, there was conversation in the group about just sometimes, you know, having, having, having it be more clear about the Chair or designee will probably be beneficial. One example that was shared is when it is logical for another board member to address or answer a question within their zone. It might be that the Board Chair identifies that person as a designee. But that's what the group is suggesting for an edit there. In what's missing, Quadrant Two, Section C, Communications with the Public, Item F. So, this is all about board members receiving communications from staff, students, families, or community members, and that the information will be conveyed to the Superintendent, and the complainant will be referred to the Superintendent and/or to the appropriate district process. There's, there's no disagreement about that, but, but the group feels like what's missing is that the board member who receives that communication can acknowledge the receipt while simultaneously including the Superintendent and the Board Chair. There was nothing in Quadrant Three that the team couldn't agree with. And we, there was a, there was a conversation that was tangential, I would say, to our assignment. And we just put that in general in the questions that we have. Further conversations about how do we ask questions related to presentations? When does it get put into the portal or the question document that exists? And some further clarification around that, that process or that trajectory of asking questions. Anything else, team? Sunita, anything else? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So, now we're gonna move to the first group with Sections One through Four. Roles and Responsibilities, Governance, Operating Agreements, and Leadership. And that was Susan and Tammy.
Thank you. So, this group, in talking about what might be missing, one thing was mentioned that was in the previous longer draft that was found to be helpful to say, which was about noting that the Board uses Robert's Rules rather than just assuming that's understood, that that's the guide for the Board's parliamentary procedure. In looking at what could use more clarification or edits, one specific line item that there was feeling could be clarified more was in Section Two, Letter D. The line that says, "Make decisions only as a whole Board at properly convened meetings. Individual directors have no authority to take action or direct the Superintendent to action and policy or organizational matters." And they felt that could be clarified about how that's addressing essentially two areas. Board members don't make decisions for the Board. The whole Board makes decisions for the Board. And also that the Board makes decisions in public. The Board does its business in public as a public body. And those two concepts are kind of combined in that line item, and it was felt it wasn't entirely clear as to what the intention was, at least on first reading, and that, that that could be improved. There also was just overall the suggestion to look for redundancies and compress or eliminate those redundancies. There was a feeling that there was still too much, maybe too much detail, and that there were some areas that could be cut down. Really, in particular, looking at Section Three, the Board Operating Agreements. There are multiple different line items that talk about essentially the no surprises principle, about bringing things up with the Superintendent and Board Chair with a heads up about questions or concerns before a meeting, before raising new issues. But those are split out into multiple different bullet points or letters. And there was a feeling that that could probably be clarified and compressed. And that also in just, you know, we have this noted under kind of the sticking points or the areas that there were concern or can't agree about, is still just a feeling that overall it's too long and too detailed, and they'd like to compress and simplify more. And the specific feedback that the table on Page One, while it might be a helpful guide in other areas, felt like it didn't belong in these working agreements and could be removed and be something that is, is separate. It does mostly refer to, to things that are established in policy and compresses it into a table, but that it was felt that it, it wasn't, to these two board members, it wasn't a helpful start to the, to the operating agreements draft. Anything else?
Great. So, now we're gonna have an opportunity for those of you that didn't have those sections to maybe provide additional questions, if what you heard from the shareout, you wanted to have them expand a little bit more on, or something that you wanna discuss as a group. So, we'll go back this way again, starting now with our Group One that just shared what their recommendations were, or things that they wanted to get clarity or edit. Do any other board members want additional information or have additional comments in that section? Yeah, feel free to. Go ahead, Susan.
I was, I was not paying attention to whose hand, besides mine was up. So, in Board Communication, E, I'm sorry, Board Communication, C, Letter E.
I was gonna say, we're gonna focus on your section first, though.
Oh, so sorry.
Whoever wanted to ask about your section first, so let's look at Roles, Responsibilities, Governance, Operating Agreements, and Leadership. And I think you had a question, Melissa.
I did, because when I first read, I saw the chart. It was super helpful to me. Could you expand on your thoughts about the chart in Section One? Not, I, I just found it helpful, but I'm also thinking there was probably more of a discussion about why you thought it could be in a different space.
So, from my experience, I've never seen anything like that in a board agreement. So, that's part of my reaction to it. And the other part is, I'm not sure it's part, it's in the policy, you know, and it's, it's, I, I feel like it's something that we should have to refer to, but it's not something that should be part of the board agreement. That, I mean, that's just my opinion upon it. I mean, other people might have, like, you know, like yours, Melissa's, like, well, this is good to refer to, and I now know exactly what I can do and can't do. So, I mean.
Also, I, I agree. I think the way I looked at the operating agreements was sort of like rules of engagement and how we come together as a board and do our work. And so, for me, having one of our policies just, just put into our working agreements, like, you know, we can always refer to policy. And so, it felt a little bit redundant and a little bit unnecessary for what I perceive a working agreements document should be. They do have some excellent sample ones at OSBA, and they're much more concise. But additionally, I had another point. Give me one second. Oh, yeah, so, for example, I, what I think is really important is for us to know when we come together, we're gonna be following Robert's Rules. And, you know, Carrie or someone else might act as our parliamentarian, and how we conduct ourselves at business meetings, how we conduct ourselves out in, out in the public, you know, a lot of that communication stuff, I think is really important. I know that's outside of ours. But for me, I felt like the work that we need to do here is what I would anticipate most of the working agreements, this section of the working agreements would be about. And then, the other two sections of communication would also be important. But I didn't feel like this section was as helpful, especially the, the first section.
Sunita, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I think the, the board chart helps us, the gist of it is that our go-to person is our Superintendent. And if that can be, I, I looked at other operating agreements for other districts, too, and I never found anything like that in there. So, if we can just put that gist of it and Robert's Rule, those things in it, I think that would be enough. We don't need to put the chart personally. But that, but that main essence of it, we need to understand what is our role in this. You know, like, when people come to us, our go-to person should be the Superintendent, because that's the person we have hired to take care of the district. That's one point. I mean, I, I'm okay with if the gist is put in there without the chart, because I didn't see that chart anywhere else either, just like Susan and Tammy were saying. And the second thing was, it's more of a clarification. I understand the fact that we should not be, you know, taking too much of our staff time. I respect that. They have a lot to do. But at the same time, if we don't get answers, then we are also at loss. So, that fifteen minutes seems very restrictive to me, that we can only ask for fifteen minutes of their time. Is it for one question? Is it for all their time? What, what is that fifteen minute? I personally would not want to put that. I mean, we need to be respectful, and that's why how we ask our questions were a topic that we had discussed between Cara and Mike. And, and one thing that came to me is that, or, or all of us, we talked about, is that before the meeting, if there is something that we see that in the presentation documents is missing, we ask for that. Or if we want an elaboration, we ask for, we come up with our questions, we bring it to a meeting. And most of the time, the presentation, we might get the answers for our questions. But if we don't, we can ask them in the meeting. And if we don't get it in the meeting because of time or they don't have it, we can put it in our port of. But, so, I mean, we still, you know, getting the answers help us to see or clarifying our confusions or, or information that we need. So, personally, I feel that fifteen minute was too restrictive. I don't know how others feel about it. We need to be respectful of their time at the same time, but maybe it can be half an hour or more clarification, fifteen minutes per question or something. Thank you.
I think on that topic, one of my wonderings is that we are seven of us, and if each of us ask twenty questions and it's fifteen minutes per question, that's a lot of staff time that they should be probably concentrating on our kids and doing something that's impacting our students, right? Instead of answering some of our minute questions. So, it's kind of like, how do we find a balance so that you get your questions answered, so that we can make, we get our questions answered, so that we get, can make the most educated, you know, decisions for our students, and keeping our questions, I guess, at a higher level? And I think it's good to discuss, like, what is too much and what is just right? I don't know, it's fifteen minutes or twenty, I don't know. But being mindful that, you know, I could be mindful, well, I'm only asking five questions, and each of those questions only take fifteen minutes. But then, there's- But then there's seven of us, right? And how often do I ask questions? And like, you know, what information do I really need to make sure that I can make an educated decision? And what information is just, I'm curious? Or, you know, I just want to know more, but it's not really my role? And I don't know, you know, I think it's good for us to discuss what that might be. I don't know if this is the right time. Is this the right time to do something like that? Or if other people have thoughts on that?
I think, go ahead, Tammy.
Yeah, I kind of, I do kind of agree with both of you, frankly. But I think that there can be a sense that Dr. Valderras can get to a point where he's like, he can come to our chair and just say, "It's become too much work for my staff. Can we figure out another way that, you know, I don't, I can't spend any more of my staff time answering the question?" So there, could there be some kind of just like, "We're too busy right now"? Or some kind of like, you don't put an actual limit on it, but we can get to a point where we're like, "Oh, we're overwhelmed. I'm sorry." But also, in my previous board work, you know, we had a rogue board member that was asking staff to do eight, 10, 12-hour projects, you know, and that's inappropriate, too. That was one board member not speaking as the board. So I don't know what the right balance is. I kind of agree with both of you. You know, I'm definitely going to have a lot of questions in my first year. And what is that balance of being told, you know, what? We'll just, we don't have the bandwidth right now. So I don't know what the right answer is. And I just wonder if there's a point that Dr. Valderras can just say, you know, "This is not the right time. We're going to have to put that off." Or some kind of reasonable response that isn't as limiting.
And I wonder about, oh, go ahead.
Why was I just going to say, as we look at making some adjustments to that one, basically, if we soften it a bit and have it more of a, I don't want to say moving target, because, you know, we want it to be the same expectations. But I think we can soften that and meet what you're after here.
One thing that I'm thinking about with that and in the discussion is that we will be evaluating Dr. Valderras, since he's our one staff person. And if at some point, he's telling, you know, Susan or any of us, you know, like, "That's too many questions." I could see us be like, "That's your job," right? Like, "We hired you to answer our questions." So I'm trying to figure out, like, what is that balance of? What it would be, and maybe putting it back on board leadership, right? Like, I feel like we, one of the things that we had been discussing with Sunita is like, maybe, when people, when all, any of us have a topic, we want to put an agenda, by all means, let us know. And then, as we said in the communications section, we'll bring it to board leadership and say, like, "Hey, that's actually something we need to spend more time on. The whole board has questions." Or maybe it's something that we bring to that non-quorum information session. Or maybe it's just in the Friday memo. But there's a lot of topics, I don't know. I guess I just, I can leave it open-ended. I think that makes sense. And want to ensure that maybe it's, we put it on board leadership instead of the superintendent. Like, he can just be forwarding us, "Here's all these questions from Susan, and here's all the questions from Karen." And maybe Sunita and I could be more responsible of like, "Hey, you guys, that's, you know, that's a little much." Or how, maybe, and it's figuring out, like, what are you trying, what do you need this information for? Like, maybe there's, we can help brainstorm, like, your intent is, what is your intent for this information? Because we want to make sure you get your questions answered so that you can make an educated decision on what's on the packet or what's really impacting our students. That's where I'm just kind of having some desequilibrium and trying to figure out what would be inappropriate.
Are there any other wonderings or questions on the first section that anybody had needed clarification, had additional feedback on? Okay, we're going to move over to the second section, which was Communications, A, B, and C. Agenda Setting, Spokesperson, Media, Communication with Public. Does anybody have any questions on that section? Or things that were raised that you agree or disagree with?
That's where my question comes from. So, under Board Communications, item C, big C, little E. If the communication is sent to all board members, and then the vice chair responds on behalf of the board, copying the superintendent, you know, if that's a question that would impact the entire board, is there a way of, like, getting a circle back so we know what the response is?
Any other suggestions for this section? Okay, we'll move to the last section, Communications. Section D and E, Communications with Staff and Visits to School. Is there any questions in this section? Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
I guess it is kind of the question that Justice was asking in terms of getting the delineation there of like, I mean, the conversation you might have at a game, that a principal comes up and, you know, maybe brings up issues at the school. You know, we know that's not the right thing to do, like, answer for them, but then to give the proper feedback to that either teacher, principal, whatever, so that the school board member looks like they're doing their job at the same time they're not dismissing what the individual's asking.
And I think that's like, part of, part of, part of it is being who we are, right? Like, people will come to us and talk to us about stuff. And so it's like, I always, we are people in our community, and we're known by our community. So it's like, it's that piece of, for me, it's like, listening to what people are saying and then saying, "Have you thought about this?" Or if I'm in a space with my children and I have to, like, figure out, am I here as a parent? Because we're, I'm all over the place as a parent. And being able to let people know, "Hey, right now, I'm here as a parent and not as a board member, but if you email me, I'll be happy to figure out how to answer that question or direct that to the right person." Because what I'm finding is oftentimes, like, I work in education, and I know education, but I don't know a lot of the stuff, you know? So it makes, I could give somebody erroneous information by trying to answer somebody's question. And so I think that figuring out whatever it is for yourself of like, when somebody comes and speaks to you and deciding whether I'm here as a person or as a board member, and then figuring out what your phrase might be, too, like, what would be our response? Because the community is always going to come to us, because we're in our community. That's, you know, we're all over the place. So that is, I think, something that would be good to clarify.
Okay. So as you can see even by this exercise, that there's always going to be room for improvement on the working agreements. And even something that you might agree this year, maybe something happens or you have an experience, and then it changes the next year. So that's why these, I just want to also mention, like, you don't want, you don't want perfection to get in the way of good. Because every year, you're going to be looking at these with new experiences, with fresh eyes, and you might want to make additional changes. But the goal is that you have a good starting document that you start working as your work carries on throughout the year. And you make notes about it and maybe come back, "Oh, remember, we got to revisit this item next year when we are looking at our working agreements." But that this is a good starting place to be at. So I'm going to hand it over to Mike and maybe talk about our next steps and see how we're feeling about what we are.
So what I'm hearing is you love these, yeah? No. As we look at this, we're going to look to simplify some of the concepts that we're here and will, of course, remove the redundancies that you've mentioned and just provide greater clarity on this. So we'll go ahead and make those changes. And then if you want to advance one more, yeah, one more, thank you. At the October 24th meeting, then we'll have an amended set of working agreements for you to look at with the suggestions that you've, that you've put in place here. And I guess we need some direction from you at this point. When we bring back an amended set of working agreements, I would assume you would like to look at these one more time. And is the best place for that to happen in a work session? Or is that to send you, to send them out to you? What's the, what's the best way to go about that?
I'm wondering what the purpose will be, because, like, we have signatures on there. So if we are supposed to sign them, then I think it would be important for people to still ask one more question if, after we see what the edits are.
Okay.
In my opinion. I don't know what you all think. Or, yeah.
And the best way to do that would be at a work session?
I don't know that we need a whole work session. I think we could pull it off in, just in our agenda. Any thoughts on that?
I would prefer it to be during, you know, a school board session, because I think we've probably gotten, communicated enough that you get the gist of what we're looking for.
Sure.
So.
Anybody not agree with that or have a comment?
Yeah, I agree. And in this case, it'd be nice, because you guys are probably going to go and work on this, and it'll be prepared well ahead of the school, the rest of the school board meeting packet. I wonder if we can get that enough ahead of time that maybe in the portal, we can even, like, do additional, like, back and forth? I don't know what your thinking is, Chair Perez, but, you know, if there's something in there that I was like, "Oh, yeah, this is what I meant to say, and this is what they heard, and it's not quite what I wanted." I wouldn't, you know, if we, hopefully, we aren't looking at substantial edits, but it'd be nice to have it enough ahead of time that we were able to say, "Oh, yeah, that was completely opposite of what I intended to say," or whatever.
The one thing I am thinking is that we have to have our discussion in public. And so I don't know that we can use the portal to go back and forth on things. So that's just for, like, getting a staff question answered, but not going back and forth.
Would it be possible to include any of that, like, back and forth into the board of packet that was available to the public?
I think that would, I will ask for clarification, but I think that would knock us out into a meeting. That would be a meeting that we'd have to do in public.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can't go back and forth unless we're doing it in public.
So my thought would be, whatever the logistics with the timing we have between now and the 24th, that we either, even if it's a small amount of time, that we get the, this is the final, what it looks like, even if it's 30 minutes to go in a meeting. I think, I don't know, I don't remember if we have something already scheduled, right? Like, so that we have enough time that on the 24th, we can agree with what we have, that that's not, you know, the time that we have to also. Because then it's going to kick us another month out.
I guess they'll ask for clarification.
So I don't know the logistics.
Do we have a work session before that, next meeting? Is that true? Okay, so maybe I'm hearing, saying, like, can we have just a portion of that meeting to just have that conversation?
Can certainly look at that in Agenda Setting with Board Leadership about the timing of that. It is also an option to have this come as an item for future action in the October 24th board meeting and come back after final round of input to be incorporated, come back with the final for approval, for approval with or without any final adjustments in the, I believe it is November 28th meeting.
Yeah, that would be good. That, yeah, so what I'm hearing you say is we'll have it come up for item for discussion, so we can actually have the discussion there. And then that would be like the first read of it. And then in the next meeting, then we can be like, "Yes, approve." Thank you. And then we'll move into the closing of the meeting. Dr. Valderras, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
No, just appreciate the work. And again, as, appreciate what Erica said. We're not in a rush to do, just want to get it right. So take our time and we'll process and continue to process till the board feels, it's your working agreements. So whatever the board wants us to do, but take our time. I appreciate that.
I just want to thank everybody for engaging in the conversation, to Mike and Erica for helping us through this, and to our staff for helping us scribe and helping us think through. So we've completed our work session for today. And we have a few minutes for a brief break before we start our meeting at 7:00 PM for our business meeting. So I call the September 26th work session of the Beaverton School Board adjourned at 6:35. Thank you.